Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of Pasco City Council this evening, October 7th, 2019. We have agendas available on the corner desk if you would like one. We also have a more detailed council packet available through the city's website. And forgive me, I'm just starting a cold, so hopefully I don't cough too much. Like that. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable Channel 191, as well as broadcast them through our website and also Facebook Live. If you get a chance to speak with council, you come to the podium up here and sharing your name for our records, we'd be very grateful. Also, if you have any cellphones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And noting too, we have a full room, it's always hard to find a cop, except tonight. I think that's tremendous. And we're gonna have a, just a little bit of a different agenda this evening, and we have an important item not too far along on the agenda. And then after we do that, we're gonna actually take a five-minute break and then resume with the agenda. So, we do have some housekeeping first, and we'll do a call, the roll call of council members.
Correct. Alvarado. Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
And Watkins.
And here, and with six of us here, we have a quorum, and if you would join us in the pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna ask Judge Shea to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance divided on the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice and all.
And we have a tiny bit of a business before we do our swearing-in, so we have a consent agenda, we consider these items to be routine, and we'll do them as a single roll-call vote unless a member of council or public wants something considered separately. Those include the approval of minutes from the September 16th meeting to approve claims in the total amount of $6,107,383.68, and also to appoint Abel Campos to position number five, and Jerry Cochran to position number eight of the planning commission. Number nine, excuse me, to planning commission. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Anything to be removed or considered separately? Hearing none, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Serrano, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado is not here, Barajas?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mil- uh, Milney?
Yes.
And Serrano?
Yes.
With that, passed unanimously, so we did that bit of business, and we get to go to item four tonight, which is a real treat this evening. We're gonna administer an oath of office to a new chief, and I'm gonna start off with Mr. Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor and council, first I wanna start off by saying how safe it feels in here tonight. Thank you for that. That's my pleasure this evening to introduce you to a person whom you all know, but this is the first time I'll be introducing Ken Rosky as Pasco Police Chief, Ken Rosky. And a few brief words about Ken, as council knows, we went through an extensive search, and our candidate wound up being an internal candidate. Ken has served and protected the community for more than three decades, and began his career in Pasco as a police officer in 1986. Matter of fact, Webster Jackson's in the room, and he helped hire and recruit Ken. So, a lot of history with the community. Ken was promoted to sergeant in 1998, captain in 2004, and deputy chief, as many of you recall, in 2017. And outside of the department, Ken has served in several key leadership positions within his profession, Tri-City's Regional SWAT Team Incident Commander for, I think, seven years, state president of Fraternal Order of Police, and chair of the Columbia Basin College Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. So he's had a lot of exposure out in the profession beyond the department. Our chief holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and a master's of science degree in organizational leadership from the Union Institute and University, and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy. As I mentioned, this selection's a result of a national search, and we attracted some very impressive candidates as part of that. Actually made the decision kinda difficult, so Ken is here because he competed nationally, and I'm very proud to say that, and I know Ken shares that as well. I also note, this is the first time in more than half a century that Pasco Police Chief's been promoted from within the ranks. So I think that says a lot, not only about our candidate, but it says a lot about the department itself, and how much it's progressed over the years. In terms of the room tonight and the ceremony, Ken and I had talked about it, and personally I feel oath of office is something sacred, and deserving of as much transparency as possible. And as I said, when I shared this with Ken at the time of his election, and I asked if he'd be comfortable with being sworn into council meeting, he readily agreed. He may not have been thinking there'd be 100 people in the room, and thank goodness Bob Gere isn't in the room, but you're probably over limit. But I wanna introduce the Honorable Senior Judge Edward F. Shea, Federal Judiciary, U.S. District Court, Eastern Division of Washington. Judge Shea will administer the oath of office, and this will all be official. So, Your Honor, and Ken.
He's raised his right hand. If you'd have to make, I, Ken Rosky.
I, Ken Rosky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the police chief of the City of Pasco.
The duties of police chief of the City of Pasco.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And now that he's all sworn in, Chief Rosky, would you, do you have a couple of words you'd like to share?
Yeah, I don't, I probably, John probably wants me to be by a microphone here. First of all, thank you. I am honored to stand before you as your next police chief. I'm humbled to work with some of the finest men and women in law enforcement, and to serve a community, I proudly served for over 30 years, diverse and challenging but respectful community of Pasco, and it's been my honor to serve them. I'm looking forward to the future, looking forward to serving with many of you out there as community members, but then certainly with our fine men and women in law enforcement. I value our partnerships, whether that's our partners in other law enforcement agencies, and the united fight that we have for public safety, and I'm pleased to stand before you, and again, honored and humbled. I didn't plan a speech, so I'm gonna leave it right about there. Thank you.
So, two items of note, I would note that included in the representatives this evening, I have seen the chief of police from Kennewick, I know that we also have representative chief from Richland as well, and I've seen representatives from West Richland, Franklin County, and there are probably others here this evening. And I also note that police officers will be going to a memorial for Trooper Saunders that fell in the line of duty years ago. And with that, since we have such a large room, we're gonna take a five-minute break, wish Captain Rosky well, and then we'll resume the meeting in about five minutes. Chief Ros-, excuse me, Chief Rosky. I almost made it. We're adjourned for five minutes. I believe you probably said that you can talk to the Code Enforcement Board if you go through the appeal process, and I would suggest you do that, because the Code Enforcement Board specifically deals with these types of issues, and they're also the organization, the group that decides if it's appropriate or not. And you should, so if you look through the letter, it says there's an appeal process to the Code Enforcement Board.
Yeah, I know when I talked to, I believe his name's Nick, he said to show up to the city council meeting, so.
Well, we'll check to make sure that we have, of course, most folks will tend to comply with the request, and then some who don't, but I would encourage you.
And I'll follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White is the department lead of that group.
Yeah, I know, we've met before, and I've been here, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, if you wanna talk with him, to be clear, make sure that you understand the process that goes to the Code Enforcement Board, if you want it, after you're done speaking, if you wanna get with Mr. White, I'm sure he'll be clear and be able to help you get to that part of the process.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys giving me time. Thank you.
Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, we're gonna go on to section six, reports from officers or committees. Anybody have a report? And I will note that we're gonna have just a very brief overview report of our calumny trip, we'll do that down miscellaneous, section is the intent, but other reports from council members, meetings, or events that they've shared? Mr. Milney.
Yeah. So, yeah, so on last Thursday, I did attend the Tri-DIC Board Meeting, which was a really good meeting, and then also after that, there's a couple council members, we also attended the elected leaders reception, which was with Craig and Bletch, so I thought it was a good to get out there and meet all the other elected leaders, and it was a good time.
Any other reports? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let you all know that the Pasco Taco Crawlhold that held a one-day event on Saturday, and it was sold out, and people were being turned away, so we had almost 250 people in downtown Pasco walking around to four different restaurants, so a good amount of business was had, and people, you know, had a good opportunity to experience what downtown Pasco's like. So, I talked to a number of people there that were from Kennewick or Richland, who also had never really spent a lot of time in downtown Pasco at all, so it was good to have community members from our surrounding communities come and enjoy what Pasco has to offer.
Thank you. Now, the reports, we're gonna go on to section eight on the agenda, first item for discussion night related to an ordinance for design construction standards specifications for public work improvements. And we've been off for a couple weeks, but I believe this is an item we've talked about before, Mr. Worley.
Yes, we have, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, this was, there was a presentation given to council several weeks ago about the design and construction standards, and a good presentation was given, and so tonight, we are looking to possibly pass an ordinance to adopt the standards, and we'd be happy to present any additional information that council would like.
And was this is the one also that you reached out significantly to the developer community?
We did have a workshop with the developers, and got their comments, and prepared responses to those comments, and incorporated many of the comments into a revision into the document.
And any, since we did talk about it at a workshop setting, any changes to anything since then?
Don't believe there's been any changes since the last workshop, no.
Okay. Discussion on this, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, I'd just like to say I wanna thank the staff and the contractors that were very involved in this process. I think it's safe to say this is not a perfect thing at this point, but I do wanna make it, I just do wanna say, it is a living document. This is something that we can always come back and, you know, discuss and make the appropriate changes, but I wanna thank the contractors and the staff for getting together, this was something that was due for quite some time, and you guys came through, and I hope that we can just continue moving forward and making this process more successful. Thank you.
Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I move to approve, to, I move to adopt ordinance number 4457, approving the design and construction standards and specifications for public works improvements.
It's been moved and seconded, further discussion? Yes, go to Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. So, one thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to echo very much what Mr. Martinez has said, and I hope that we can use this a little bit as a model as we go forward on a number of other changes we do, not just within public works, but within other organizations and other codes, and changes to our code, where we really see what we can do to work with those that are really affected by this, and make sure that we, whenever possible, get their feedback prior to making some changes. I know at the elected leaders reception, I had an opportunity to talk with a member of the HBA who said, you know, until the second round of review, he wasn't even aware this was going on. And that seems like one of those things in an organization, not specifically whether the HBA or not, but there's often concerned interest groups that we don't want to drive the process, but certainly having some of that consultancy with them, I think, would make for better partnership with our community. So, I certainly agree, echo what Mr. Martinez said, that this is, I think this is a good change, and it's moving in the right direction, and I'd like to see some of our other efforts as we go forward involve that level of community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I may ask for your vote, all those in favor of ordinance 4457, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, as I think echoed several times before, living document, we want to make sure that our design standards are at the highest level for the people of Pasco, and when possible, that be able to accommodate those that do those construction and those techniques, certainly as warranted, so we'll look forward to that update to the Pasco standards, specifications. And, I know that was a ton of work, thank you staff on that one, and thank you for the contractor builder community too, for being involved in that. We're gonna go on to the next item, we're gonna go on to the next item, and that's related to rezone Franklin County Irrigation District Number One, a rezoning of a parcel of property, and who on staff is introducing that? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just before we address three of these, four of these rezones tonight, I just wanna remind council that even though we switched to a hearing examiner system, which conducts the public hearings for rezones, by state law, the hearing examiner is precluded from making a final recommendation, so her recommendation comes to you for a final decision. This particular rezone involves a two-acre parcel on the south side of Court Street at Road 111, and the proposal is to change the existing RS20 zoning to RS12. The applicant, the FCID, intends to short-plot the property. The existing zoning would allow a short-plot of two lots, the proposed zoning would allow a short-plot of three, and the hearing examiner considered this rezon request, added public hearing in September, and has forwarded a recommendation to council.
And also probably, note too, that these tend to be quasi-judicial in nature, so if any council member has any, has had any particular discussion with anybody involved in these land use matters, or they would disclose, and we'd talk about those.
Sir.
Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this process, for this decision, it did go through where the neighbors were notified, and they had the opportunity to voice their opinion, that's correct.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, thank you, that's, I wanna make sure of that.
Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4458, rezoning a parcel located at 11020 West Court Street from RS20 residential suburban to RS12 residential suburban, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Barajas, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of 4458, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And, we go to item C, story family five, I, rezoned on West Court Street. Mr. White.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council, this proposed rezone involves roughly a two-and-a-half acre parcel, right at the location where Court Street turns north at the alignment of Road 84. Again, the applicant intends to subdivide this property, and the existing zoning would allow a maximum of five units per acre. The proposed RS1 zoning may allow seven units, depending on how the lot is, how the subdivision is laid out in particular. But the hearing examiner likewise concluded a public hearing on this item in September, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to city council. It's probably worth noting that the short-plot design will also involve use of the private access code amendment that council approved just a short while ago. The lot, as you can tell, is a little bit different in shape and size, and the southern boundary has, is encumbered by a portion of the 100-year floodplain, so the applicant intends to utilize the private access opportunity for two additional lots.
And just as a practical matter, so that nub on the upper left would imagine to be turned to some sort of driveway. And and just as a practical matter, so that nub on the upper left would imagine to be turned to some sort of driveway to the larger chunk of property?
That may involve demolition of the, it's actually, uh, a building's located on that property, it may involve demolition and and, yeah, most of the access would be from that point.
Thanks for, um, making the these geometric puzzles, uh, you know, translated the text of ordinances, uh, sometimes it's difficult to make make the connection, but that one is seems to be a pretty obvious example. So questions or a motion? Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, five, nine, rezoning a parcel located at the convergence of West Court Street and Road eighty-four from RS twenty to RS one, and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Barajas. Discussion, Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so so, Mr. White, when we're looking at some of these, um, and this one in particular, um, as you indicated, there's there's a an intersection with a floodplain. Um, I noted in there that that there's a separate set of, um, um, code that we have that deals with building in a in a floodplain. That doesn't affect the zoning at all, zoning is independent of of that and and for decisions like this, is that correct?
That is correct, the floodplain is just an overlay on top of whatever the underlying zone is.
Excellent, I'd be interested in hearing more about that at some future time.
Uh, it it, yes, and and actually council will be entertaining that item specifically, uh, at the workshop meeting in October. Uh, once it goes from the planning commission to council, the the, we had a floodplain audit. And the state has advised us that our ordinance, which is, uh, intact from nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, needs updating, so it'll be a workshop item.
Would that, um, update, do you anticipate would affect the, um, the developers here?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of ordinance four, four, five, nine, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And, uh, slightly different, story family five, two, rezone. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, this item, even though the applicant is the same, involves a six and a half acre site. Uh, with a proposed, uh, rezone from RS twenty to RS one at the northwest corner of Sylvester and Road fifty-six. Again, the applicant intends to subdivide the property. And it's believed that the requested zoning would allow approximately nineteen units versus perhaps twelve with the existing zoning designation of RS twenty. The hearing examiner also conducted a public hearing on this matter in September and has forwarded again a recommendation of approval to council.
And and once again, uh, neighboring property owners within a certain distance are notified, and I know no, uh, uh, objection was obtained on this one. Or substantial?
Uh, no, no, there was not on this one.
On this one, okay. Uh, Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, six, one, rezoning a parcel located at the corner of West Sylvester Street and Road fifty-six, uh, from RS twenty to RS one, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Serrano. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, I'll ask, yes, Mr. Milley?
So I actually did have, uh, um, resident scout there, they contacted me since I'm the council member of that area. I did go out there, I did talk to a couple of people, they were saying they were concerned because adding nineteen units in that area, going around the corner, um, do we also know where the?
Mr. Mr. Milley, I'll just back up just for a second, I think, so I just want to be clear.
I.
You you did, so.
I did talk to you.
Or you just did talk with folks, so you're disclosing that.
I'm disclosing that, yes.
And my understanding of the process is then would they have submitted any information, that that information would have been needed to be submitted to the record? Uh, Mr. Ferguson, where, are we, uh, let me know what you, you have an opinion on anything here?
I do, uh, actually, that could be considered ex parte contact, uh, since it does have something to do with the actual applicant and the particular, uh, situation that you're you're dealing with now. Uh, so I think that would just need to be under quasi judicial, uh, disclosure, he would need to, uh, the council member Milley would just need to disclose the nature of those contacts. And then, uh, allow anyone, uh, if they felt they had an objection to him going forward, uh, to make that objection. And then, uh, subsequently, Mr. Milley would have to make the decision for himself as to whether he felt he, uh, had, uh, would not be able to, um, be able to be impartial.
Okay, so and just, and let me, I may ask one more time, just slightly differently, so is it fair for Mr. Milley to share the summary of the substance of the information, uh, at this point? Or 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 not at this point?
No, uh, it it would not be, uh, he would not want to, uh, share that information currently, he would want to disclose the contact. Uh, and then, uh, he could talk about, uh, he would technically have to disclose, uh, the nature of that contact, which could involve, uh, some of the facts. But, uh, uh, as we, uh, understand, it's a closed record, so, uh, he can't add to the record that's already been established at the, um, at the hearing examiner, I was going to say, planning commission.
So the gentleman gave me a letter, I would I like turn that letter in, and then I went out and spoke with him because he was concerned, so would, how would I proceed with that?
Well, I think, uh, that's that's an excellent way to describe, uh, the contact, uh, that you had without discussing the substance of that contact. So, uh, now that you've, uh, disclosed the nature of the contact, uh, the mayor would just need to, um, ask if there's anyone in the audience, uh, who or who was present, uh, that felt that they had an objection to Mr. Milley going forward. Hear that objection, and then Mr. Milley would have to make the decision, uh, about whether he felt he, uh, could no longer participate.
But but once again, specifically, would he be allowed to share the details of that letter at this point since it's not part of the record?
No.
Okay, okay, so I I apologize, Mr. Milley. This is one of those that, uh, and this is, what this is going to come to is, is I'm going to pro forma, I have to ask if there's anybody, at the end of it, I'm going to ask you if you think you can also render it a partial decision on this. If you, if not, you you can, you can also recuse yourself, but.
Okay, I guess I'd recuse myself then, since.
Okay, um, and we haven't done this in a while, and I, uh, 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 if you if you if you already think that you should recuse yourself, then if you wouldn't mind, we'll just take a minute, uh, to continue on this, and we'll call you back in.
Okay.
And, uh, but it's, and and before you go though, I'm just going to, if there's anybody in the audience, uh, that thinks the very action of us talking about this taints the process or is concerned. It's probably a fair, uh, fair time to ask if anybody has any issues with what we've done so far. And I haven't seen any raised hands. No, this isn't, this is a closed record, so where this isn't an opportunity for the public to speak on this, this is specifically just to the council. Specific question is whether or not Milney's, Mr. Milney's actions of recusing himself or not recusing himself is a concern to the public. I'm going to suggest that's a slightly different item, but, uh, we'll, let me put a note on that, and before we're done with this process, I think we'll ask about that as well. So, Mr. Milley, if you don't mind? Mr. Ferguson, are we doing okay, do you think this?
I think you are, uh, I would caution taking any more information from, uh, other than related to that particular.
Okay, uh, with that, where we were at is questions from council members, if there's anybody else that has talked in ex parte form with any other, uh, people in the area. Uh, external to the record, if there's any other disclosures, I'm not seeing any. Uh, there is, I think, also a question of process about Mr. White, the process for notifying neighbors.
The the process for notifying neighbors is, remains the same as it's always been, we publish in the newspaper, it's on our website under public notices. And then direct mailing is sent, uh, roughly, uh, ten days prior to the hearing examiner meeting date to people within a three hundred foot radius of the exterior boundaries. I did want to point out for council sake that the record, it does contain a one sentence email that was, uh, received, um, several days before the hearing examiner meeting, and that is in the record. I also want to point out that, uh, staff is not aware of any preliminary design of a future subdivision on this site, as we were with the previous story family rezone.
Okay, so this is council's meaning for action, so, uh, I'm going to ask council if, uh, want to keep moving forward on this. Mr. Ferguson, you think we also are moving forward appropriately?
Uh, I think you are, uh, as long as, uh, you stay, uh, specifically to the site specific rezone question, uh, before you.
And that's the question, the hearing examiner is recommending, uh, approval on this one, uh, based on the record, uh, and so I'm going to ask the council, any other discussion on this by council? Hearing none, then I'll ask for your vote, all those in favor of ordinance four, four, six, one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, knowing Mr. Milley was absent on this one. Um, thank you for bringing in, uh, back in, Mr. Milley. And this is an unprecedented, I know for a fact, uh, si, uh, in the sixteen years that I've stepped out myself, uh, as mayor once and once before mayor on one item that I had, uh, what I felt was a bit of a conflict. And, uh, the remaining body, uh, makes decisions, uh, uh, as part of this process. And with that, we are concluded with item D on the agenda. Uh, uh, and I was just, uh, now that we have made a decision on that one, Mr. White, any, that this hasn't been unusual, any observations or anything that, uh, uh, we we should consider for future, uh, land use things? And we're also under, uh, uh, the hearing examiner is part of the process.
But no, I don't think so, I think everything worked out as it was supposed to.
And what's critical is that if people have any concerns, they need to use the process and submit written documents as the one person on the email, uh, includes or or part of the planning commission processes about land use.
Yep.
Okay, uh, next item is alley vac, an alley vacation for community health. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um.
Oh, and then, actually, this one's just setting a resolution for a time and date.
It is, yeah, the agenda report contains in, uh, quite a bit of information, but it's just to set the hearing to a later date.
Okay, uh, set a hearing, uh, specifically to Monday, November fourth, uh, with their, how about a motion for that or or discussion? Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three, nine, one, five, setting seven P M, Monday, November fourth, to twenty nineteen. As a time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of the alley north of Tri-City's Community Health.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez, any discussion on the hearing date? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously unanimously. No unfinished business, and number nine, we go to ten, new business, yes, more revision to C three, uh, concomitant agreement. Uh, and this one specifically is about a denial, and actually, before Mr. White starts, I'll, uh, do a disclosure. Uh, I saw in the, uh, the application for this, a name of a longtime, uh, family friend, I knew him when I was a kid. Uh, that, but I also believe, I don't have any financial interest in any of this. Uh, I haven't seen, haven't seen anything other than this record and would be basing my decision based on the record and would intend to participate in this unless there is any objection, uh, by the public or council or anything. I'll ask Mr. Ferguson, is that an acceptable disclosure?
That's great.
Okay, any objections, and I'm not seeing any audience members, uh, expressing objections, so I'll ask Mr. White to continue on. Unless there, unless there are any other disclosures? None, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and and council. Um, again, this stems from a recommendation of the Pasco Hearing Examiner, uh, by, just brief history, ordinance forty, four, forty was approved by council earlier this year. That authorized a very limited rezone to C three zoning on the parcel at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Boulevard and Road eighty-four. Um, in, uh, I believe June or July of this year, the applicant sought additional C three uses through an amendment to the concomitant agreement. And those, uh, additional uses are outlined in your agenda report with bullets, including small contractors, distributors, warehouses and parking of business vehicles, all of which were prohibited. Through the original, uh, concomitant agreement that was approved in June of twenty nineteen. The hearing examiner also conducted a public hearing on this item in September. And after a review of the evidence and record, has submitted an application, or excuse me, a recommendation, uh, recommending denial for this concomitant agreement amendment. No written appeal of that recommendation was received.
Thank you for the summary, uh, discussion or a motion, Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. White, so I I'm unclear on the process here, I know what what, before we had the hearing examiner, we'd certainly indicated which items within our packet were quasi judicial in the past. Um, so that we had a good heads up as to what sort of process we're going to. Um, and a revision to an agreement like this, is this considered quasi judicial in fashion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you still like to?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Please do.
I move to concur with the recommendation of the Pasco Hearing Examiner and deny the, uh, request to amend the concomitant, I'll get that word right someday, agreement attached to the C three zoning of a parcel in the, at the northwest corner of Chapel Hill Boulevard and Road eighty-four.
There's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Martinez. Further discussion? Mr. Martinez?
Just to be clear, that we're voting, uh, uh, a yes vote would be to deny, to deny the, um, the recommendation.
Uh, would, they're recommending denial, so the the, the changes are be requested by the applicant would be denied. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of, uh, the denial of the concomitant agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, with that, uh, we are through item ten A, and we're going to go on to section ten B, and that is related lodging tax advisory committee appointments. Mr. Zabel?
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, uh, city lodging tax committee's been around for about a couple of decades since nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, it was established, uh, uh, in in, uh, its establishment and its composition of it, of the establishment is specified in state statute. The committee evaluates, uh, proposals of lodging tax monies and makes recommendations to the city council on the expenditure of those as part of your budget process, which they'll be meeting, uh, later this month to to start that process. Uh, as I mentioned, the board composition is set by state statute, so two from businesses that generate, uh, lodging tax dollars, hotels and motels. Two from activities that, um, can receive lodging tax funds, which are many, uh, as long as they're tourism related. And then one, uh, elected city official, and I, Mayor Watkins, I believe, is serving in that capacity right now. Uh, vacancy exists for a hotel motel representative. Uh, Tiran Patel of A One Hospitality has applied and, uh, we had some conversations with him. Staff recommends, uh, reappointment of the current members as well as appointment of, uh, Mr. Patel.
Any other questions or a motion, Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to confirm the reappointment of the following individuals to the lodging tax advisory committee. For hotel representative, Monica Hammerberg, user representatives Colin Hastings and Hector Cruz, and for city council, Matt Watkins. An appointment of hotel representative, uh, Tiran Patel with A One Hospitality Group.
There's a motion, is there a second? So, uh, been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez, discussion on this?
Yes, the question, Mr. Mayor, so you, uh, being reelected under, uh, does that mean, um, at the end of your term, that the mayor would take over that position?
I believe the presumption would be, and then, uh, what, in fact, what happens is, uh, we're ha, it's an annual meeting that's coming up here in two or three weeks, and it's, uh, so the the action will not be required until about this time next year. And presumably, the mayor would, uh, at that time would serve on it.
Right, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, and I would just note too, just in, uh, I've, uh, yeah, and then that meeting's coming up, and it's a fairly pro forma meeting and and, um, very, goes very fairly quickly. With that, uh, I'll, no other discussion, I'll ask for your vote, all those wanting to confirm reappointment and appointment of the new individual signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And off to, I guess, we're into state bills related to a house bill, grossed second, engrossed second substitute house bill, one, nine, two, three, grant application. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a follow up from our last workshop meeting. And the request is for council to authorize a mayor's signature on this submitted letter to the Washington State Department of Commerce for, uh, grant funding for the three bulleted items in your agenda report that are designed or at least intended to either lessen the acceleration of of housing cost increases or to provide additional affordable housing. We believe, we're still in conversations with the Department of Commerce about how to exactly structure the scope of work so that it reflects the timelines and the, uh, uh, tasks, specific tasks. But the bulleted items are what staff would propose that, uh, council authorize, uh, Mayor Watkins to sign for our, the the focus of our, uh, application to Department of Commerce.
With that, questions or discussion or a motion? Mr. Milley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute the authorization letter for the grant application for E two S H B, incorrect, engrossed second substitute house bill nineteen twenty-three. Funding and submitted to the, uh, Washington State Department of Commerce.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez. Discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We go on to item, um, eleven, miscellaneous discussions, starting out, general, I will reserve Kalima towards the end, Mr. Mayor, say that. No, no other comments, uh, and I think, uh, and I, we could have done it earlier in the agenda, but, uh, three representatives, myself, Mr. Zabel, Mr. Milley, uh, come back about one o'clock this morning from a very fruitful four day trip to Kalima as a return. They came and, uh, visited us. They came and visited us earlier this year. We went and visited them. And I'm gonna, I'll finish off here and note that we're, we need to do an extensive report and would like to do that in the next several weeks. Just wanted to just give just a tiny little preview, I guess, and a couple of observations this evening. I'd also, I'd say in most summary is beyond our expectations went very well. With that, I, Mr. Milley or Mr. Zabel, if you have some thoughts about our, our delegation to Kalima?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, besides the incredible hospitality, the part that I took away from it was that this isn't just a thing that you're just signing on and then, yeah, we're good friends from now on. It's actually like an agreement where there's actually goals for both sides to get done. And it was really, really well thought out. It was really encouraging to see something that's this connectivity between the two cities. But again, it could benefit Pasco quite a lot and obviously be good for Kalima. But it's, it was really impressive, and I can't wait to, to share more of what we have to say in a couple of weeks. But I think everybody would be very impressed of what they're saying and what we're wanting as well, so.
Mr. Zabel?
I think I'll, I'll start out with, my biggest disappointment on the trip was we're in a 450-year-old city, and I didn't get a chance to really explore it because we were so busy working, visiting, looking at things, talking to, to folks. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a very beautiful city. The planning in that city is actually pretty amazing, the bones of it, when you think about it. But in terms of what we saw, who we talked to, starting with the governor the very first morning after, I think we got off, we got to Kalima about 2:30 in the morning. We were meeting him at 8:00. So that's how we started our trip, and I think about three days later, we, we were kinda recovered and caught up. So it was, it was a lot. But amazing amount of connections between folks in Kalima and here in Pasco. Seems like one of the, one of the state workers that was working to kinda help us get around and, and explain things to our delegation, which we had several in our delegation. His uncle lives and cousins live in Pasco, you know? And it was almost everywhere we went, somebody had a Pasco connection. Dr. Reyes was with us, and she was part of a delegation that, that, and I don't wanna get too detailed, but just the educational connection, I think there were some good, good opportunities there. Agriculture, we spent some time on that. The arts and culture, culinary trade. Governor talked about technology transfer and even the concept of some, that industry that they're starting to develop, medical tourism. So it's, there, there was a lot to think about. And it's much more than I think any of us had considered before we went down there. When you got on the ground and saw it, saw what was happening there and thought about what's happening here and the number of connections that can be made, it's, it's really exciting, so.
And just even here, when we were swearing in the chief, I got to see somebody that I knew from the 80s that worked for my father as a farmer and his son, who born there, went through graduate pass, go high, but then moved back, asked me how Officer Guzman was doing, and so I got to pass on a message for Officer Guzman. So those kinds of connections were every, multiple ones every day. And what I would like is that we, we need to actually debrief with our new friends in Kalima to provide a more comprehensive package and set of recommendations for consideration of the council. We'll be doing that in the next week or so. So if that's okay with council, we just wanted to let you know our wonderful trip. And, and there is also, and there's a, I would note, too, that Kalima is both a city and it's also the capital of a small state. A lot of the interaction, most of the interaction was related actually to, with the state. But also our secretaries were, had run for mayor of the city and that sort of thing. So there, you'll end up finding it's not a one-for-one exactly sort of thing, but it's, but it, there, it makes, it'll end up making sense. Is that, is that a fair summary, Mr. Milley?
Yeah.
Okay. So if that's okay with council, or if you have any questions, we'd love to talk about it. I think we'll stick around after the meeting to talk one-on-one on our experience as well. It was very, it affected us all, I think, is a good summary as well. And that's gonna be our summary of the report that we're gonna give in a couple of weeks. Any other miscellaneous discussion by council? Any need for an executive session?
Not this evening.
With that, then we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.